And just start getting the foundation laid and start talking to my people and we'll talk some more and we'll try to get it going.
I just have a quick question here on one of the associate degrees. It's really piquing my curiosity.
I hope I can answer it. If I can, I'll find out for you.
Well, I appreciate that. Surgical technology.
Yes, sir.
What does it consist of?
It consists of being inside the surgical room and you, they have classes they offer. Now, all those classes are in Logan for that particular program and you get a certificate and as a search tech. Take care of, go ahead.
Instruments.
Yeah.
Learn all the instruments and they learn to sterilize them, lay them out and know what to hand the doctor when you have.
Scalpel.
Oh, sure.
And that's, as a matter of fact, it's been very successful. Now, they do, now, that's a pretty new brochure, but now what we'll do too, they take surveys in the area. And some of those may not be there next year because of the demand for work. We try to keep that group of classes that we're offering in a regiment that they're going to get, they're going to get hired. And we know, we know that teachers will get hired. In three or four years, we're going to need more teachers than ever, so, but that's what that is in this program. All right, well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
I appreciate it.
We'd also like, if you would, to convey our appreciation for contributing for our new school sign. You know, we got a little, we got a little bit with our first one, but.
That's okay.
Cooperative effort, but we do appreciate it.
Well, you know, when I sent that email, I wasn't sure that it came through, so I'm glad to hear that too, I really am. It's been a privilege and I tell you what, I really think that we can do more than we're doing and I'm not going to apologize for what we haven't done because we're working hard to do better. And so I think with the work and the communication we got, I think we can do better things in the future.
Thank you very much.
If you don't care, I'm going to go home. Thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And members of the board, you all will, you entertain this idea of us. Maybe, think about your idea, turn to one more member, present us and then they.
And then me.
Yeah, then the second. Yeah. Miss Luke might want to, or she might want to designate someone else. I mean, it sounds, the concept is good because, you know, nothing against Mr. Cook, but it's been a while since we've been updating on what's really going out there. The more often the better. It seems like the logical place of us, we can all, any interest we have, we can share with them because a lot of things, I, we've talked among ourselves and he's kind of in on tonight.
Well, he did stop by to see me a few months back and was going to follow up, balancing with the weather, you know, seeing the way it was this winter. He did not, and I was glad to see that he was on agenda and brought this up because he actually had more information tonight than he had mentioned it.
So, I'd say, get your own thoughts on that. Something you think we wanted to say, we'll go with it. It's just a good idea to make that. Okay. Last and ever least, and I'd say he's even got a partner with him, we have Rick McDowell, Bill, who want to talk about the elementary counseling grant.
Bill, a partner.
Look, he's not even coming with you, Rick.
No.
He's going to sit close.
Um, I'm going to let Bill do most of the talking, but we have a chance to apply for a federal elementary school counseling grant. We learned about this at the end of March. The grant is due April 28th. Not untypical of grants, you know, we have this very short turnaround time and several of us have been working once or twice a week, getting together to sort of talk about this grant. And Bill has been our point administrator in the project, so he's going to talk about it. We'd like to give you some information, answer what questions you might have about it. Like I say, it's due the 28th of this month and so we'd like to get your blessing to go ahead and apply for this and hopefully get the funding so we could, we could start it this fall. So, I'll let Bill talk and Will, I'll chime in.
I have about 45 minutes, y'all need break. Y'all tell me shut up.
We know when we were in the trouble here, when you said you felt like you were the adult. You said he put him on you too.
No, we just break one.
What do you think? I can't answer any questions. I thought he was going to give you guys a favor.
Now, I made it.
Get the little refrigerator over there.
But he's, it's a good topic, Rick, so we're going to let you talk.
You just didn't look far.
I didn't, okay, I didn't. What it is, just make some highlights of the grant here. What we're looking at is looking at attendance, behavior, and course success in this grant for our students to try to improve the graduation rate in the end. But what we're applying for is $400,000 per year for three years. We were really blessed, last time we had a counseling grant, we got spoiled and had great success with that and we're hoping we can go on with this. The premise of this is we're really wanting to target our K through three students with this grant. And the reason why is if, you know, if you can get a child on grade level by grade three, the chance of him being successful and graduating is a lot greater. You know, we, I was over at the high school, kid dropped out in the ninth grade, you know, you take a hit for it, but they really dropped out in the second or third grade because they were far behind and looking at some of the grant, the innovation zone grant that we've been working on, Jessica Frye put some of this together, as of December of this year, we had six students drop out to high school. Of those six, three of them were retained one time, one was retained two times, one was retained three times, one was retained four times. If I was retained four times, I'd probably go to the house too, you know. But that's one of the things. On the second page, if you want to look, what we're proposing is.
Bill, I'm not fault. Seriously.
So, he's on the second page?
On the second page.
I was looking for a chart.
I don't think we had that.
Oh, that part.
No, that's just something I know.
Okay, oh, I do, sorry.
I want to give y'all the information.
I mean, I'm looking for a chart.
What we're looking to hire is a full-time counselor at Hartz, out of this grant, additional one, which would give two for the PKA, additional one at Hamlin, which would give a two for the pre-KA, one at Duval, which would give two for the pre-KA there, a half-time at Ranger and a half-time at West Hamlin, which would give both those full-time counselors there. Also, two social workers. And the social workers, if you looked, I'll talk about that in a minute. We're wanting to contract with either Prestera or a new group called New Horizons. Did I say that right? New Horizons. And the reason we want to do that, it costs us, it costs a lot less money to contract with those people and do those services and at the first year of the grant, it would be so much, then they would start billing through some of the services they provide. The second year, it would be less, the third year would be even less. So, we're hoping in the end, for sustainability, that we have, they would be self-sufficient and still be able to serve our kids by, through their billing. If you note, Gaunt Valley would not receive one and reason why is because it's an elementary, you have to have elementary students and Gaunt Valley does not have elementary, but currently what we have there is a full-time counselor anyway. One of, one of the things that we are, would be targeting at the bottom of that page is the ABCs, it'd be looking at poor attendance, bad behavior, failing grades, at risk of retention, high-risk family, single-parent household parents who have not completed high school, low socioeconomic status and the like. Looking at this, out of these students that had dropped out, four of those six students have dropped out and missed a cumulative of 141 to 230 cumulative days of school with an average of 15 to 25 days a year. And if you look at the next to last page, maybe last, it's a chart. You look at the chart. Okay, let me explain what's going on here. Okay, these are young students that were targeted through the truancy program where we have Mr. Pritchard, myself, Ms. Frye, Rick serves on it, probation officer, DHHR, different groups. And last year, we started attacking the truancy problems of our students and really looked at our attendance policy and put it in a different chart. We called it attendance protocol and it was basically our attendance, but we put it out there in bullets where people understood. If you look, the students, the number of students that were targeted for this, H1 through H9, those would be students at Hartz, okay? Of course, WH, West Hamlin, HM's Hamlin, and M is Midway. If you look at first semester, look at H1 up there, last year at the end of the first semester, they had a total absence of 68 points, they had 30. This year, they had 11.
This is the same student?
That's the same student.
Student one.
Student one. Student two went reduced from 25 to 9.5. You can look at the data down through there and see what an improvement has been made with these students at the young level because, you know, you can change those behaviors at a younger age easier than it is at the older age. You know, I think about this lunch problem, I was at Ranger, it wasn't any problem, everybody eating lunch, you just lined up, you went through. They had 100% participation, but when they get a little older, it's harder to change that behavior. And if you look at some of these students transferred, I want to comment on that a little bit. Some of these students were taken out of homes because it was triggered by attendance and DHHR got involved and they were in homes where they were, were not being, taken care of, some of them, there were drugs in the home and a lot of these kids have moved to other homes in this county and continue to follow them, so they've been some success with those students, even the ones that's transferred. So, that's one of the main reasons we want to target the.
Bill, let me just, so this person, person here, that student missed 68 and a half days?
68 and a half days in school year 12, 13.
And 30 of them were in the first semester?
30 of them was in the first semester and in the first semester of this year, they missed 11.
Bill, would you say that part of this is the, where Jessica was hired through this particular grant and you all have targeted at-risk mentors or mentors?
Well, yes, that was part of it. Some of this was prior to those mentors, but that is health loss, I guess.
But they have, they have certain students and they call the parents, they follow up, they're, they have some things in place.
Yes.
That they are working and making sure that they emphasize the importance for those children to be at school.
That contribute.
So, I think we're, I think we're seeing some benefits.
Yes, we are.
From that, you know, with this here, as well as working with the court system.
Yes.
They have partnered very well with the school system, I think, better than what we've seen in the past.
Yes, they have.
It's not, we're doing one thing and they're doing another. We come together.
We're working together. In fact, we looked at our attendance policy and we thought, well, we may need to revise it. Well, after we looked at it, we realized we just need to follow.
Exactly.
So, that's kind of what happened.
And I recall, maybe, we had early on and K. Parton, I think, Mr. K. Parton.
Yes, yes, we had several people.
And it was very apparent that everyone knew that we needed to work together, we just had not, I don't think we had all sat down at the table, you know, at one time and looked at this epidemic that we have with attendance and we were not going to make strides with what we needed to if we didn't have the support from the courts.
That is, that is correct.
And they were very much willing, it was just, we needed, I think it goes back to the meeting, Robert Davis bringing all of the judges together and, you know, making sure that the county schools and the courts were working together hand in hand to address this issue.
That, that is all correct. And we're also, if you, we're really wanting to target that K.3 because we, like I said, we feel like we can make changes and that was the students that was targeted with, with the attendance to there. On page three, we just basically talked about school climate survey, which has to do surveys at the end of grants and then use some of the data to, with tying with your objectives. And the bottom of that, 20, 20 points out of 100 is an evaluation of the grant. And the last grant, we had this same person evaluated that grant and was real successful and the people know that and that has a little bit to go with us. If you look on over, goal one, looked at, we're looking, we want to maintain our comprehensive school counseling, which, I'll say this and you all know, we have wonderful counselors in our county. They do a great job. When we got the grant, the grant, our concern was, will we find quality people? Well, we found above quality, all of them, they're excellent. Of course, we want to go to the recommended ratio of 251, be part of our needs for this grant and we want to continue to focus on attendance, behavior, course successes for the general school population. Goal two, we want to identify the elementary students, remove those barriers, I'm not going to read this word for word, improve parent caregiver engagement with the school system. Going back to, up to when we were going to hire people, the two social workers, those social workers would work 12 months, but they're not our employees. They would be New Horizons as a group we're probably looking at, there's a draft memorandum understanding here. They would work 12 months. So, they would also have those connections with these at-risk kids during the summer and we even talked about the backpack program, you know, we feed students during the summer if they're, some of them can't get there, some of these social workers could possibly do backpacks from, piggyback on our summer feeding programs to get these people.
Yeah, now, these social workers, were they working exclusively in Lincoln County?
Yes. The way we're looking, we're looking to assign one on this side for Midway, Hamlin, and Duval, one on the other side, West Hamlin, Ranger, and Hartz. That's what, what we looked at. Okay, the goal three is what we really want to talk about is, you know, every grant you write, a big part of it is a sustainability plan. That's 20 points of it also. And we just have about seven bullets here that we would like to throw out there and see if you guys are comfortable supporting those or if you think we could do this at the end of the grant. I guess I made a note here, be proactive instead of reactive, kind of thinking, you know, if we get this grant three years down the road, we don't want the same situation of all those hearings and all that, knock-down dragouts that we've had that's made some of us sleep, not sleep at night. So, we kind of, but one of the things, one of the number one there would, we would hope that the number of students not dropping out of school would help contribute, which, you know, that would be a given. Contract with New Horizons or Prestera to hire school social workers, positions would be billable, positions will be sustained by the contracting agency and would offer continual services to students during the summer. We're also looking to get pledges from business partners to help with the counseling at the end of the project. A commitment, a portion of the increased revenue from property tax toward remaining, maintaining recommended counseling ratio. Birdie, birdie link over there, what?
It's on there.
Okay.
I think it's on there.
Three years down the road.
Three years down the road.
Four there.
Okay.
Maybe we'll get there.
They won't get there.
Explore the possibility of including counselors in the next levy. I know Canal County, I think, does that, that's part of their levy. Community fundraising, support counseling collaborative initiative, and also examine the possibility of legislature, including counselors in the state formula. So, I guess, you know, we're just asking, would the board consider these or try to do these at the end of this grant?
No, we're just.
Okay.
You had, don't break this stuff.
Okay, okay. And then next to the last page is a draft, this, one of the things we'd like, you know, know if you guys would consider these things to sustain the grant, but also the grant is due April 28th, as Mr. McDowell said, and you don't have another board meeting for then. But we have to submit things, so I guess we're asking, could the board president sign off on the memorandum of understanding once we got to submit it for the grant?
Okay, are there, the first question that somebody's going to ask here, as far as there are commitments for this three years, as far as funds from the Board of Education?
For three years, no.
Okay, I'm asking the first question.
No.
I know, that's what everyone was thinking.
In the last, in the last grant we got, it was three years, but it actually lasted four. There was money left over, we actually went four years on the grant.
So, does anyone have any thing else that they want to ask Bill?
One about how she Midway's name not on her little record.
I just caught that too, Fred. They should be, they should have been included there.
Okay, yes.
They should have been.
Anything else?
I read this and went over and I just. The only issue.
I think in this memorandum of understanding, you just scale out, this is a three-year.
Okay.
Commitment, this is really open-ended, I mean, you sign off on this, it says that you may continue doing it for life. We may continue doing it for life.
Okay, okay, we can, it is a draft.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Maybe in your first bullet point, contract with Board of Education, provide two social workers with master's degree, similar credentials.
Okay.
For.
Three years.
A three-year period coinciding with the term of the screen, something like that.
That's a good point.
Let me submit that, you don't have to submit like the bullets, like the levy thing, that doesn't have to go in with it, does it?
As part of the sustainability, we would want to put that, yes, because that strengthens our chance to get the money.
Yeah, Bill, we, we're not, with that tax increase, we actually are losing money because they changed the law.
I told you before we started.
So, yeah, so we're down, so nobody thinks we're getting this extra money, but we're losing, was it 19,000 or?
Or 32.
Or 32, I can't remember which number it was. So, we're, there's not money being generated by the increase in property value.
Bill and I had a little conversation before we wore me and I pointed that out.
Out of those seven bullets there, then which ones could we be comfortable?
Let me ask you just about the second one here. Reimbursement, is this, are these amounts constant? Is this reimbursement for each will be 40,000, not including benefits, for the first year and so forth?
Yes.
Are those amounts going to be constant? And does that reconcile with what you're thinking, Birdie?
You probably don't have to.
Oh, she hasn't seen it, okay.
Well, this is, and I think of what he said, that as these people from New Horizons are orienting themselves to the program, they would begin to build for some of their services, so in year one, the grant pays $40,000 for that person or people. In year two, it pays 28,000 and New Horizons is expected to cover the other 12,000 difference from year one to year two through billing. And in the third year, they're expected to cover the, I guess it would be $24,000 difference between year one and year three through their billing. Why does?
It's only for the, it's not for the school council, it's just for the social workers.
Just for the social workers.
I'm just trying to clarify, if, you know, if those are flexible or if those amounts would always remain the same, then I can briefly guess how they accomplish, but if that wording is.
No, that would, they would remain the same. I think you.
That's, that's the discussion we've had with New Horizons and those are the numbers we've, they said 40,000.
And of course, if that's what we committed to, that's what we would.
Which is, and it's 40,000 each, it would be 80,000.
Right.
80,000, including benefits and match, that the benefits are above and beyond. It's included with the 80,000.
Yes.
And so, these social workers wouldn't typically, necessarily, if the state gave teachers a raise, they wouldn't benefit by that?
No, they're employed by New Horizons.
Okay.
And one advantage is they're 12-month employed. If we was hiring somebody for 12 months, it would be, or a social worker, you can figure what that would be.
Could we possibly explore, sort of 2018, like committing some of that? I mean, that's a long ways to look ahead to.
Yeah. Well, of course, everything in the levies are admitted. The only thing that we would have is, you know, some surplus money, like, you know, this year we ended up with 218 in surplus.
Are you asking Carol five years from now?
Right.
Should we consider, she's saying five years from now, should we?
Can we explore that possibility?
Well, I think it goes through 19.
Oh, it does. Well, whenever it ends, I think that's what Carol's asking.
Yeah, well, maybe then we could look at, you know, doing something, adding a different money.
Because we might be optimistic, get more revenue, do something.
Well, hopefully, probably that is going to increase some more in that town area.
There may be funds there.
We just, at the end of this, if we're having success with these counselors and helping students, we just don't want the battle we've had in the past. I've been on this side, you've got to been on that side, you know what it's like.
Well, we all agree, everybody here of the benefits that counselors and social workers have, that's never been an issue, it's always been a funding issue.
Right.
And I'm sure everybody agrees with me there. Does anybody, would anybody have any difficulty?
No, I don't, I think it's a good thing, but I'm a little concerned about three years, we don't want to have any, know any results, because they're just now reaching middle school and, you know.
But I mean.
I agree with you that that's when we lose them, in the first three grades.
Absolutely. So, it's no wonder.
Hopefully, we can look at some of them.
We don't have another board meeting for that, if we had to pursue this without.
I don't know much, it's about every month, every broad day.
As long as we strike, committing the portion of the increased revenue from the levy, this doesn't.
Six out of seven?
From the property tax at that point.
Right.
Okay.
Strike that one, about going in the levy.
That's exploring the possibility.
Well, the possibility, you explore anything.
In 2018 or 2019, whatever, at the next year, you can explore that.
That's what I meant.
You can explore anything.
Right, absolutely, that's a commitment.
So, beat this for your 20.
Okay, you'll need to change that date. You'll need to change the date.
Okay. So, the levy money.
You might be.
It's every year, you're on junior.
Tree that's spring.
Yes, yeah. If it passed and.
And Sean will be here.
And as far as the memorandum of understanding supply, as long as we correct that, we'd be okay with.
That's my understanding.
Okay, okay. So, with, that these grants, like you say, you'll find out five weeks where they're due.
We know how that works.
I'm real optimistic that this is going to help, these little ones, there's so many out there that don't have the parents to support them and grandparents are trying to, but it's not working real well. So, I'm optimistic about it, I'm excited about it.
Well, it's getting more so related to.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
That's one of the things I know, we have our school board associated, I think, one of those sessions, you know, there's been this proposal that, you know, if you're not at a grade level or you want to call it grade three, you don't get pregnant. Well, you know, I've made comments that you, people aren't very realistic here, if you've ever been out there. I wish it were going to be that way, but I think it's wishful thinking, but we want to get as many as we can get. Do you have anything else?
When, when does this grant be awarded?
I think we would, we would find out till October, I believe it's October, yes.
October, okay. You don't know, middle, beginning, end?
So, when would you actually implement this, 2015?
We would hopefully try to get started with it second semester if we got it by that time. And that would go back again to like the other one we got before was the same way and we didn't get started till mid-year and that's the reason we had carryover funds, because we didn't pay salaries and things.
For half a year.
Half a year, so we had money left where we could carry it on forward another year.
Now, the two social workers would work for New Horizons.
Yes.
The other, the counselors, would they work for the? The other, the counselors, would they work for the Board of Education? So they would go through the typical advertising, posting procedure, and hiring people, just like anybody else?
That is correct.
Can I clarify about Midway? Would that be a?
That would be, that would be a halftime, which would end up giving them a full time, because they currently have a halftime. I don't know why that was left off.
Doesn't West Hamlin, they're going to have it because of counseling. And that's correct, first? They have two half times. So, or are you going to add another halftime at West Hamlin, Bill? So they would have one and a half halftime?
No, no, no. That's probably where the mix-up is.
Okay, so that halftime.
It probably should have it, yeah. Because that person is halftime Midway, halftime West Hamlin. That's probably where we should make a statement. We'll clarify then.
Yeah, and we're glad that Trish had foresight that Guyan Valley would go ahead and, you know, release the assistant that replaces counselor there, so that kind of.
She may have an end with the feds on all this. She may be able to get through.
Maybe she worked on this Bill thing.
Let's just, let's just hope in three years, we have to worry about reading. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill, thanks, Rick. Sure, you're welcome. We're excited about that.
God, have a great evening.